All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for February 13th, 2018. First thing on our agenda is to turn to members of the city council and see if they have any information and/or follow-up requests for the community. Councilman Williams, to your floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple items. I was very honored. I was Speaker at the National Forest Foundation, and that is the conservation effort to clean up our forests, which helps bring clean water down the hill into our water plants, which saves us anywhere from $10 to $25 million if it comes barreling down there and it's very, has a lot of turbidity in it. And we think it's extremely important in this day and age to recognize that the forests are overgrown and not maintained, and it's very important that all the cities in the state get involved in this and make sure that we get this so that we get maximum water running down the hill, reduce forest fires, and make a healthy environment in the north. Also had the opportunity to meet with the Thai Counselor General. I was very surprised, meeting with him and his delegation, how much business they do in the state of Arizona. They have become, in Asia, a very centralized area that provides a lot of high-tech to the other countries, and they are looking to build further relationships with the city of Phoenix and engage with many of our employers around the valley. And last but not least, our next District One breakfast is February 23rd, 7:30 a.m. at Metro Center, the hotel, and our guest speaker is going to be Lieutenant Colonel Matthew Williams. No, not my grandson, from Luke Air Force Base. And tell us what's the newest at Luke Air Force Base, what the airshow's going to be, and how many countries are involved in training out there. And so, public is invited. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Stark, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, Desert Horizon Precinct is having State of the Precinct. It will be from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. at the Foundation for Blind, which is located at 1234 East Northern. It's going to be a great opportunity to meet the commander of the precinct, Gabe Lopez, and Assistant Chief Mayor Roberts will also be attending, as well as all of our community action officers. Also, I do have a request. Last night, there was a horrific accident at 18th Street and Greenway, and I've had a few phone calls and a couple emails regarding that intersection, and there's some concern that perhaps we need a light there. I don't know exactly all the details. I think it did involve intoxicated driver, but that is a pretty dangerous curve. I drive it a lot, so I think they may have a valid concern. So if I could get a report on that, I would really appreciate it.
Clarify, it's 18th Street?
Street and Greenway. There was, I think, five people injured, one child died. But it was pretty bad. It was pretty tragic. I would appreciate it. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Other members of the city council? Councilwoman DeCiccio, please.
Thank you. As a segue to that, on streets, I'd like to see if staff could come back. Now, this is for future dollars on the light rail, operational capital, or whatever amounts of monies that you believe to be an expense that are going to be in that program for future dollars moving forward. I'd like to see staff come back in a couple weeks, two weeks, full breakdown of the following: the projected light rail costs and expenditures on an annual basis for each of the projected lines that are planned at the city of Phoenix, and break it down by source of funding, again, and also by cost of, you know, whatever, how the breakdown would be on that. I'd also like to see a timeline of expenditures broken down on each of the proposed lines. When are we expected to be putting out those dollars? Capital, operational, all types. The other part of it, too, is I could, I'd like, what was that again? Councilwoman Stark, regarding, tell me.
Proposition 400?
400.
It was the Glendale because they're not going to do light rail.
Right.
Maybe we can look at a way to get that funding?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So I think we should take a look and see what happens to that funding that was allocated for that light rail extension. Since it's going away, it's an opportunity for Phoenix to take a look at that, and maybe we can get...
And how much is available, potentially available?
Okay.
Is that true?
There was...
On that, or not?
I'm sorry, Sal. I didn't research that.
Okay. No, no. I didn't ask you that. I was just asking if I could ask that.
Oh, yeah. Please, please. I'm sorry.
Just to see how much...
I just don't have the number off my head.
I didn't write it down completely. So, it was, it's my fault. Prop $400 monies that would have gone to light rail when Glendale canceled their project. How much is available? I know other cities are going to be looking at that as well, and how much could come to the city of Phoenix and what that could be used for as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Other members of the council? Vice Mayor.
Good afternoon. I would like to congratulate Mayor Stanton for being recognized by the U.S. Conference of Mayors for the city's support of small businesses and for championing policies that help local business and entrepreneurs. Under your leadership, Mayor, the city has and continues to implement programs and policies that have made supporting small businesses a priority, helping them to get started from the ground up and succeed. So congratulations, Mayor Stanton.
Thank you. As always, I get the award, but it represents the work of the entire city council.
Secondly, I want to offer my congratulations to the Public Works Director Ginger Spencer and retired Director John Trujillo for their leadership in shaping the Reimagine Phoenix Initiative, which is being recognized globally as one of the five public sector finalists in the Circulator's 2018 Awards, which recognizes the world's most inspiring organizations contributing to the circular economy, where materials are designed for future reuse and at the end of their life become a potential resource rather than trash. So, I'd like to congratulate them for that. Thirdly, 20th Street Improvement Project Public Meeting. It's this Thursday, February 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Camelview Elementary School. It is located 2002 East Campbell Avenue. In the cafeteria, there will be a public meeting to review and comment on the proposed plans for 20th Street. And as you can see right in front of me currently, you see this great items that are in front of me, and I would like to acknowledge Alia Almarid for building and doing what we are currently having at Cityscape on Central and Washington, the Global Market pop-up store. And if you are looking for any Valentine's items or any gifts at all, they are open Monday through Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m., and these are all crafts done by the refugee community. And so, as you can see, you have jewelry, you have sweets, you have candles, you have purses, you have artwork, anything for your home, you have body scents. So, they have everything. And so, I'm encouraging our constituents and our city to go and support our refugee community. Thank you.
Your necklace.
Oh, and my necklace, yes. This is one of the beautiful necklaces or jewelries, which I consider an art piece that is being sold at the Refugee or the Global Market pop-up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, for bringing attention to the International Global Marketplace pop-up shop. That's pretty cool, and I'll be there tomorrow, doing some shopping. Why not? Councilman.
Thank you. I'd like to start out by remembering a major champion in this community, Bill Strauss, who we recently lost, and thank Mayor Stanton for expressing the spirit of the, or the condolences from the entire city for what Bill Strauss and the Anti-Defamation League did for our community, and our police department being a great ally on heart hate crimes, standing up against anti-Semitism, and speaking out against discrimination, whether it be against the immigrant community or our Sikh community. We really lost a great champion, so thank you again to the mayor for recognizing that on behalf of the city. Councilwoman Noakowski and I got to attend the Levine barbecue this weekend, and I continued my three-year streak of losing to him in the milking the fake cow contest. No matter how much I train, it's just not going to happen for me. Want to thank everyone who attended the FAA meetings. We'll have to be diligent and stay on top of that process for quite a while. Want to thank the Indo-American Foundation for their great event this weekend, which raised funds for several District Eight nonprofits, including Phoenix Day and New Pathways for Youth, some of our great partners on the My Brothers Keeper Initiative here at the city. Wanted to recognize anyone celebrating Lunar New Year Tet or Spring Festival right now, and thank the Vietnamese community for having me out this weekend as part of their annual marking of Tet, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Valenzuela, please.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. I'll start with this week, Thursday, February 15th. The Water Services Department and the Office of Arts and Culture are holding a community meeting for an enhancement project on 73rd Avenue and Critten. This project will take place, while the overall project will be near 73rd Avenue and Indian School. The meeting will be at the Starlight Park Baptist Church, 7901 West Ossie Road, between 6:30 and 7:30. We're going to, well, I guess reactivate a green space here together, so people have an opportunity to come out, certainly be heard, meet the artists, meet the city staff that is, that is working on this, and it's good for the entire community. The, I want to talk a little bit about the whole tech innovation and education behind it as well. There are a lot of things going on in the city of Phoenix, as usual. This past weekend was the Third Annual Youth Startup Weekend. It's sponsored by the Cohoots Foundation, and we, this year, we had 50 students from around the valley who came together, we paired them with mentors from the private sector. We worked with them all weekend, Friday night, all of Saturday, and of course, on Sunday, these groups of students between, you know, the group size was between three and five. Students came together with their mentor, and they pitched their idea for, for a business. So, everything from, you know, how you market this, a lot of them already had a website up, of course, how you pitch. It was actually pretty impressive. It always is very, very impressive. This is, this is the first time we actually had students come from a different country to be part of this program. So, we actually had a group of students from Toronto who came down to be part of the Phoenix Youth Startup Weekend, and that was, like I said, it's always a lot of fun, very impressive. So, congratulations to Cohoots, and of course, the foundation. I also want to just mention the Maryville High School Library, speaking of the education behind this. Now, the library applied for a grant that's sponsored by Google. It is Ready-to-Code Grant. There were 400 applicants from around the country that applied for this grant, again, funded by Google. Only 7% of the applicants were awarded, and Maryville High School Library was one of them. It's the only library in the, in the valley that was awarded a grant. And, and so, what they are doing with this grant is they are teaching students, those students who aspire to be schoolteachers, early education schoolteachers, they're teaching these students how to code and how to teach code, because by the time they become teachers, coding is going to be prevalent in these, in their schools and their classrooms, which is, of course, the hope. So, so, you know, congratulations to the Maryville Panthers there as well. And the last thing I just want to mention, Startup Weekend is coming up here, between the dates of February 19th to the 23rd, right in downtown Phoenix. All of it this year is actually going to be held in downtown Phoenix. We are going to end Startup Week with a street pitch. So, this is Phoenix's version of Shark Tank, and it's right over here. We're going to do it right off of, right near Cityscape, so that everyone has an opportunity to see. People will be able to pitch their ideas to a group of investors. The winner will be awarded a $50,000 investment in their business. And so, you know, it's some exciting stuff happening, especially for our local entrepreneurs. Again, our version of the Shark Tank here in Phoenix, and that's going to be on the 23rd of February at 6:00 p.m. right here in downtown Phoenix.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments from the members of the council? Excellent. A lot of things going on. I'll now turn it to the Vice Mayor to see if there's a call for executive session.
Mayor, in accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-431.02.A, meet in the executive session on Tuesday, February 27, 2018, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th Floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Noakowski, you were on the phone. I apologize. Did you have any council information you'd like to provide?
Well, you know, I think Danny covered some of the stuff that's going on in downtown Phoenix and District Seven at Cityscape, and I also just like to thank all the people that came out at the FAA workshops last week. They turned out really great, but you still have time to file concerns and comments to the FAA. You can go to www.skyharbor.com to submit your, your comments online. Also, I want to just give a big shout-out and thanks to all those individuals that helped out in the Levine Community Council barbecue. It's 66 years they've been doing this barbecue. Turned out great. Close to 9,000 people showed up, and it, first time at Caesar Chavez Park, so it turned out really great. So, thank you, and Mayor, we missed you at the milk, milking the cow this year, so maybe next year we can have you out there, right?
I enjoy that very much, but like Councilman Gallego, I've never been successful winning the contest. She did indicate that you had a great cow milking experience this past year.
Absolutely. I was on the first, so I kind of broke it in for everyone else.
All right. That's an important lesson. When milking the cow, go first. All right.
And Mayor, just to remind everyone that we still provide free tax services for individuals. If you want that information, especially for modern-income families, you can look it up on phoenix.gov for those locations and how to help prepare your taxes. And that's really it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that great reminder about the Earned Income Tax Credit Program and the fact that City of Phoenix does provide free tax help for folks that may qualify for the important Earned Income Tax Credit. Thank you, Councilman Noakowski. Now, we're going to move on to item number one on today's agenda. Item number one is a request to authorize for our professional staff to submit specific areas of Phoenix for the creation of opportunity zones. When Congress passed the recent tax bill, one of the consequences was provision to establish an opportunity zone program. Using the census tract system, these zones are intended to promote new economic development. Cities around the country have been given a limited window to act and submit a list of qualified census tracts to the state of Arizona. We still have a lot of questions about the new opportunity zone program, and we aren't certain what it will look like in practice, but we do know for sure that we can't let Phoenix fall behind any other cities. That will undoubtedly take advantage of it, and it's why we are moving quickly. So, I'm grateful to our Economic Development Director, Chris Mackey, and her team for responding right away when I first asked her to look into it just a few weeks ago, and I appreciate her thorough research, that it went into a better understanding of opportunity zones and opportunity funds, and identifying these areas in Phoenix that qualify. So, my understanding is that our team will make a recommendation here today about what parts of the city of Phoenix should qualify as an opportunity zone, and then I think we're scheduled for a vote here today as well. So, Ms. Janovich, who's a Deputy City Manager in charge of economic development, I'll let you introduce the item and hand it over to Chris.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. We're here today to talk about opportunity zones. I have joining me Chris Mackey, our Community Economic Development Director, and I'll ask her to provide the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We are here today to talk to you about a provision of recent tax legislation that was signed into law in December of this last year. The federal tax, this provision established an opportunity zone program that utilizes the tax codes to defer or forgive capital gains on investments. Since this is a provision of the tax code, since this is a provision of the tax bill, the city of Phoenix needs to act on this or will not have an opportunity for investment. Other cities will see that investment. Let me explain to you how this is going to work. Well, it all starts with capital gains. So, when I sell stock, interest in a company or real estate, I have capital gains. So, let's say I buy a stock for $40, and I sell it for $50, I have $10 of capital gains. If I buy real estate for $1 million, and I sell it for $1.5 million, I have $500,000 in capital gains. On a short-term issue, my capital gains tax could be as much as 37%. On a long-term, my capital gains could be as much as 20%. Individuals or corporations may take portions or all of their capital gains and invest them into an opportunity fund. It will allow them to defer paying taxes on investing that money at that time in the opportunity funds. Opportunity funds are an investment mechanism, investing at least 90% of its asset in that specific fund. These opportunity zone funds are created solely for the purpose of investing deferred tax dollars into specific opportunity zones. As an example, let's say that I have capital gains of $250,000. I invest them in an opportunity fund, and I leave them placed for five years. I see a 10% forgiveness on my capital gains tax. If I leave them placed for seven years, I see a 15% forgiveness on my capital gains tax. But let's say I leave them invested for 10 years, and over that 10 years, my $250,000 has been invested. It's built buildings, it's put in infrastructure, it's created jobs, and now that number is $2 million. When I withdraw my investment, I either pay, I pay my reduced tax on my capital gains or potentially no tax on my capital gains, but my appreciation on my investment, my new investment of $1,750,000 won't see any tax when it's removed out of that investment. What the program is designed to do is to entice new private investment, community investment into specific areas of the city. It's also important to note that even though the council may approve or recommend to move forward with these opportunity zones today, Phoenix may never see any investment into their opportunity funds. It'll be up to the fund managers to go out and market to individuals with capital gains to showcase to them why they should invest in a Phoenix opportunity fund. And then, how are we going to determine the opportunity zone locations? The way the legislation was written, it created eligible census tracts, and those eligible census tracts are those that are defined as 20% of their, that particular census tract's population is in poverty, or 80% of that census tract's family income is, the family household income is 80% of the area median income. So, if the area median income is $60,000, that census tract would have to be $48,000, that 20% difference between those two. Using that guideline, we had, using that guideline, we had 184 qualified census tracts in the city of Phoenix. The law, as the legislation was written, really tried to hone it in onto specific areas, so only 25% of any state's qualified census tracts can be included as opportunity zones. It was meant to focus the investment in specific areas. With that math, there were 46 Phoenix recommended census tracts that we have continued moving forward with. In front of you in yellow, you see all 184 eligible census tracts in the city of Phoenix. What staff did next was go to that next level and talk about each area. As we talked about a moment ago, only 25% of the area's census tracts can be submitted as opportunity zones. In front of you, we have our proposed recommendation for the 46 census tracts to be considered for the opportunity zone certifications. And I truly want to thank each and every one of you and your staffs. Over the last two weeks, you spent a significant amount of time with me and my team in identifying your areas of your districts that you thought had the greatest opportunity for economic investment. No one knows your districts like you do, and this time you spent with us was truly beneficial in this process. So, in front of you, we have those suggested tracts, which we would submit through this process. As you can see, the tracts that you've, that you've suggested match the council goals and objectives that you've charged economic development with in job creation. In front of you, you see those specific sub-markets highlighted. You see Deer Valley, Paradise Valley Mall, Midtown, Edison Eastlake, Gateway, the Rio Solado, South Central Light Rail Extension, the South Mountain Technology Corridor, Desert Sky Mall, Grand Avenue, Downtown, Camelback West, 19 North, Metro Center, and Deer Valley. It's also important to note that in these opportunity zones, it's not only investment in real estate and infrastructure and buildings that are allowed, but it's also investment in early-stage and mature companies that is allowed as part of these investments. Next, I'll kind of walk you through next steps. We're here today, the review of the census tracts has been completed by staff, and we do have our 46 proposed census tracts for council's consideration here today. Our next step is to recommend those to the state, and we do have a deadline of February 23rd to get those to the state. The next step would be for the state of Arizona to submit their written recommendations to the, to Housing and Urban Development for the entire state. So, they'll take Phoenix's, the Phoenix's and all the other cities and put them together and turn them into the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development by March 21st. The Secretary of Housing then certifies all of the census tracts that are submitted as opportunity zones, and those are due 30 days after submission by the state to the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development. Something you don't see up there in front of you, the Secretary of Treasury will oversee the opportunity funds, and the reason we don't have specific deadlines on those is those will be rolling funds. Throughout this process, individuals and corporations and investments will be creating those funds and driving the investment into those areas, and that will be moving throughout the entire 10 years. As note, the sunset on this program is December 31st, 2028, so it does have a 10-year expectancy. Staff does request city council authorization to recommend to the state 46 census tracts for the creation of Phoenix opportunity zones, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, do you have a quick motion? See if we get a second, then we can open up for questions or comments.
Yes, I move to move approval for state 46 census tract for the creation of Phoenix opportunity zones.
Motion and a second. Now, I'll turn to members of the council. Questions? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Thank you, Mayor. When I first made aware of this, I mean, there's so much in the tax bill that, I mean, we're just starting to see. This could literally be one of the most significant things, investment-wise, in our community that we've ever seen. Just be, a lot of it has to do with the fact that, you know, investors look at tax-free. You know, they look at that as part of their doing business, and then they look at the risk as well. But the fact of the matter is, this is going to be quite large for the city of Phoenix, and I want to commend you for jumping on it as quickly as you did before even people understood what was going on. That's a lot to be commended for, and I would lay odds we're probably one of the first, if not the first, city to actually submit our plan to the state this quickly. But I've got a couple of questions, and the other is, like, you know, for those of you that have never used a 1031, that's what investors use, you know, this is a 1031 on steroids. It literally is that significant. Couple things right off the bat. Were we able to ever determine whether or not initial investments were going to be able to be used in this as well? I don't think that there was anything in the law that prohibited initial investment rather than capital gains reinvestment inside, in these opportunity zones.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that's information that the Secretary of Treasury's still working on. At this time, they've identified the capital gains, and that capital gains has to be recognized, has to be invested in an opportunity zone, a fund within 180 days of its creation. So, as we work with Treasury, they're still writing those rules, and we're getting them each and every day. I would look to our intergovernmental, we haven't, I've received any new information, so they're literally sending us stuff on a daily basis, but to your point, we wanted to jump on this quickly to get our proposed census tracts ready to move forward.
If you could, just, if you get a chance, just monitor the initial investment part, because I think that that adds a significant, large, I mean, it's just a significant layer on to this. It could be quite large if that's the case. The second, one of the things, too, the federal government has what time to basically create the rules? They have a timeline where they're supposed to create the rules, and it's supposed to be under an entity that's supposed to enforce those rules. What is the timeline on the rulemaking? Or do they have one?
Right. As Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, as we understand it, it will be in conjunction with the certification of the zones, so they expect to hand down the rules as they certify the zones. So, we'd expect the final rules to be written. I believe it was 90 days from the creation that those had to be written. from the creation that those had to be written within. So we're working on understanding those rules and getting those rules right now. And then the Secretary of Treasury was who, as we understand it, will oversee the rules, but they're going, as we understand it from history, although we haven't received all the comments yet from Secretary of Treasury, from the history of the debate, it appears that they'll function much like New Market Tax Credits. So a board will be created, and that board will decide where those investments will be made.
And just as a more of a political question, too, it would behoove, most of us up here on the council, to start talking to people investing in these areas and getting ahead of the curve before other cities do and other places do. I mean, I don't think it's, there's a limitation on how many of these they're going to approve, but it allows you to be able to move funds pretty quickly, and you're looking at some pretty significant investments. The fact of the matter is, it's not limited by a like-for-like. It literally, you could bring in an investment into a community that you have, you know, rental homes, and you can invest in offices or operating businesses, and that's the big different, well, it's one of the big differences on the ten thirty-ones. But it would behoove us to really start making this a real strong push with business communities, even though I know a lot of the rules haven't been set in place yet, but we do know the areas. And then when does the state of Arizona have to come down and say, okay, Phoenix, this is not set in stone, correct? The forty-six areas? I mean, or is that set in stone with the governor's office?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, it is not set in stone. That will happen by the governor's office on, on our, March twenty-first.
Okay.
And that's the day. We have had conversations with the governor's office, and our anticipation is they plan to move forward with what the cities submit. That's what they did share with us, is they gave each city the opportunity to select its own twenty-five percent.
Wow, that's pretty large.
And we'll be submitting those forward.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Big news.
Thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Vice Mayor.
Chris, what sort of development can be supported by the opportunity zones?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it is, it is virtually limitless as long as it's an investment in the zone. It could be infrastructure.
Oh, it can be.
It could be infrastructure, it could be public infrastructure.
That was my next question.
Yeah. It could be private infrastructure, it could be buildings, industrial buildings, retail, multifamily, it could be single-family residential. There's not a, unlike New Market Tax Credits, at least as of yet, it does not appear from reading the history of the debate that there'll be jobs tied to that creation. So it's more the investment in these, in these individual census tracts. So you can also invest in a company. So let's say there's an early-stage startup company, like the global market. There are early-stage startup companies that could be invested in. Individuals could invest in those, in those businesses as well, or in mature businesses.
Well, thank you. That's a, that's a great variety of choices. My second question is, if qualified census tracts fall into the already designated redevelopment area per city, state, and federal guidelines, can they still qualify as an eligible opportunity zone?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, what will qualify as the eligible opportunity zones are the forty-six census tracts that are before you today? As, there weren't any specific layers that said they needed to be in a redevelopment area, or they needed to be in another designation. So our anticipation is they would be accepted as opportunity zones as we move forward with the, with the state and the governor's office in the forty-six that we submit, even those that are already in defined redevelopment areas.
Okay, so yeah, because with the redevelopment areas that I looked at, some of my census tract, or some of the census tracts, several of us, land in that redevelopment area. So I'm hearing that yes, then it continues.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Stark, please.
Thank you. This is pretty exciting. But what if we have designated a tract, and then we find out maybe someone doesn't want to invest in that area, or we just don't have anybody interested? Is there a way that we could look at another tract then within the city to take the place of the forty-six that we're choosing?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, unfortunately, as the, as the rules are written today, it's a one-time opportunity only to take those forward. That's not to say that as this program modifies, that, and people start to actually use the opportunity zone program, that Congress won't modify those rules, but as it exists today, it's a one-time only.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by members of the council on this program? All right, so we have a motion in favor of...
Mayor, I just have a comment.
Oh, Councilwoman O'Kowski, I apologize, please.
Mayor, I just want to thank staff, I mean, for the downtown area, having that downtown Grand Avenue as an opportunity to really develop, and having a zone in that area is great for, for the downtown area, for our Maryville area in District Seven, especially in the Desert Sky Mall. What a great opportunities that we have. We sat down with staff, and we looked through District Seven, and we, we measured out the areas that we felt would have the big benefit from this. And we looked at South Mountain, especially with the, with the light rail going down South Phoenix, and having that extension as a part of this in South, South Mountain, creating the two oh two and having that tech corridor and the Rio Salado. So I just really want to thank you all for your hard work, and also you, Mayor, for helping advocate for the South Central Light Rail Extension area also.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Noakowski. Motion, a second? Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilman Waring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Keep us updated, please. I know it's moving quick. Next item on the agenda, item number two. Item number two is the Pension Stabilization Strategic Action. City Manager, I know you'll lead the conversation, but you've got other professional staff members here. This was, as promised, a couple of weeks ago, that we were going to do our early budget forecast a few weeks ago, do the pension analysis today, and then the five-year forecast, I'd leave in a few more weeks from now. It's all part of our way to get as much information to the members of the council as possible. So Mr. City Manager, how'd you like to proceed with this item? Is this, this is not an action item?
Mayor, this actually, there is...
There is an action item associated with it. Okay, please.
Yes. So thank you, Mayor, for that introduction, members of the council. A couple of weeks ago, we talked about this, but also last December, we had a work-study session where we discussed ways to continue the council's work to boost our financial position and address our pension finances. As we talked about then, there is no one answer or solution to pension. There are many, many different ones. And so this is one of these that, as we promised then, we would come back with further discussion and strategy. As the mayor mentioned, two weeks ago, we talked about the sort of string of budget and finance issues. So as we talked about, the budget is really a one-year view. We do a five-year forecast, which we'll be back in two weeks on. That looks at five years. And when we talk about pension liabilities, we're really addressing something that is a twenty-five-year-plus issue. And so we need to remember that we have, we need to take time to do it right and to do it in the pieces that are necessary. So those on the long, on the horizon are those longer-term obligations, and that's really what we're here today to talk about. Our annual required pension contributions impact our yearly budget, and we take that view over twenty-five-plus-year life of the liability. As we discussed, like a home mortgage, it's not immediately something that's due, but we do need to plan for it over its lifespan. The council's been diligent in reforming the city's pension system, saving one billion dollars over the next twenty-five years. The state controls the public safety pension, and voters last year instituted reform that began on July first. So here today, Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton and our Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson, who will ask you for approval on an interesting strategy to pay down a part of our pension liability early. We think it has some great promise, and so Denise will walk us through and explain what our proposal is.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So what we're going to do today is give you some background. We're going to talk about what we can do through the use of enterprise funds. We'll talk about some policy, policy considerations associated with this example, and also ask for a recommendation. So first, you've seen this chart before, but I just want to show it again. This shows our history of our percent funded for our systems. You can see by this chart, we have blue represented for police PSPRS, and red is fire PSPRS. And you can see, ten years ago, we were about seventy percent funded on our pension plans. That has decreased to about forty percent funded as of sixteen seventeen. On COPERS, which is the city retirement system, you can see that ten years ago, we were almost at eighty percent funded. We are now currently at fifty-seven percent funded. Now, the thing that's important about this chart is, in COPERS, over the last five years, we've done a number of pension reforms, and you can see that that's starting to take effect, positive impacts there, and so the number is starting to go up. And we are anticipating that due to the state reform on the PSPRS program, that those lines will also be trending up, starting in seventeen eighteen. Median for large pension plans, as far as percent funded, is about sixty-nine percent, and a goal that we should strive to achieve would be about eighty percent funded. So now, let's talk about what we can do. So in December, we talked to you about the possible use of enterprise funds to pay down the pension liability. We started by looking at wastewater, because there's an opportunity that's coming up in the spring to refinance existing wastewater revenue bonds for savings. And so when we looked at their net pension liability, wastewater is currently at seventy-four million dollars. This is for two hundred and ninety-two positions in the COPER system. This idea would not delay any wastewater capital projects, and this would not cause any wastewater rate increases. So now, what I want to do is walk you through exactly how this would work. So as I said, wastewater's pension liability is right now seventy-four million dollars. So that's the amount that the wastewater enterprise fund owes for pension. That amounts to an annual payment of about six point four million dollars. So what we're proposing is that we use some cash that was going to be used for pay-as-you-go projects, and instead use that cash to pay down the net pension liability. When we pay that net pension liability down, that means the annual payment for the wastewater enterprise fund would be zero, and the net pension liability would also be zero. Then, in the spring, excuse me, when we go for refinancing the wastewater bonds, we would also do new money for an amount of seventy-four million dollars. This would be financing capital projects in the wastewater capital improvement program. The annual debt service on that would be five point nine million dollars, and that's a very conservative estimate. So then, the savings in annual payments for the wastewater enterprise funds would be about five hundred thousand dollars, and over a ten-year period, or a twenty-year period, this could amount to about ten million dollars in savings. So let's talk about some policy considerations. If we do this, it would improve the city's financial, financial position. It would show the rating agencies that Phoenix is willing to take action to address funding our pension programs. It basically is trading a pension liability that's variable in nature for a fixed debt service payment with a lower interest rate. And the main thing is, it would increase our percent funded from fifty-nine percent to fifty-nine percent, I mean, from fifty-seven percent to fifty-nine percent. And so the recommendation is that we are asking for your authorization to use wastewater funds to pay down the net pension liability, and then keep all those savings in wastewater reserves.
Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
Do you want to deal with this issue first, and then hand it over to Jeff for additional information?
This is, this is the entirety of it, yeah.
Excellent. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on the staff recommendation? All right, so the, the motion is to support the staff recommendation on the proposal as, at least as it relates to wastewater fund pension liability. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Mr. Wes Harris, you wanted to provide testimony on this item. Your card is marked in favor of it. Good to see you.
My name is Wes Harris. As a member of the Water and Wastewater Citizens Advisory Committee, and speaking as myself, not for the committee, I do go along with this with qualification. I consider this a Band-Aid on a much bigger problem, and it's kind of a robbing Peter to pay Paul to deal with an issue that we seem to always want to kick down the road. We've had opportunities to readjust our pension. This is never going to go away with the existing pension plan, and it's something that, that has to be dealt with in a positive way. And we haven't, we've been derelict in that particular area, in my opinion. It's unsustainable, to use a word that I really don't like, but this is, this is what we have. Our public pensions are larger liabilities than our entire federal debt, county, state, the entire country. We owe more money to public pensions than anything, and that's something that we've got to deal with, because one day, there's just not going to be enough money, and you won't be able to rob Peter to pay Paul. So I, I do support this, but I get really concerned when we say to use enterprise monies. Being a member of that committee, I consider this enterprise my enterprise, because I'm involved in it. So I take, I take a very dim view of anybody rating any funds that belong there, because the city of Phoenix has the best water situation of any city in the country, in my personal opinion, and that's backed up by fact. We have the lowest rates, we have the best water, we have the best management team, we have a great organization. We don't want to screw it up, and we don't want to use it, and we don't want to milk it for other areas, because it stands alone, and it's the lifeblood of our community. Water is everything. Without water, we have nothing. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris, for those comments and for your service on the rate committee as well. Councilman Waring, please.
To Wes's point, so the city is borrowing the same amount of money overall for a lowest in, a lower interest rate. If I summed it up, isn't that true? You guys are nodding. I mean, isn't it basically that simple?
Yes, Mayor, and Councilman Waring, that is actually the truth, and all of the benefits will stay in the wastewater reserves.
So really, take Wes's point about the pension system, but this isn't kicking the can down the road. I take issue with that characterization. It's smalling, it's, it's not solving a problem, but it's chipping away at a bigger problem. Nobody's claiming that the problem is now gone, but it helps address the problem, a bigger problem. You know, I don't think it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. That implies we're, and then kicking the can down the road, same thing. This is actually making a positive step and saving ultimately taxpayers' money, whatever funds it comes out of. There's the opportunity to do this in other areas potentially down the road. Again, even in totality, all the possibilities, it maybe isn't going to solve the problem, but it helps, well, you don't have the curves up there on the, the chart at the moment, but, and you don't need to have them up there, but, you know, it helps maybe bend them or at least slow the deterioration. So he's not wrong that it's a big problem, and that this isn't an all-encompassing solution, but it's certainly something that helps. Certainly, all credit goes to, to my mind, to Sal DeCiccio. He's the first one who mentioned this kind of thing to me. So, you know, I, I think we're sitting here today because of his efforts, which I appreciate. I appreciate that staff followed through, and that, here we are. If this was pushing off debt and so forth, you know, I, for my part, I voted against that plan a couple of months ago, or whenever that was. But, but for this part, I, I don't see the downside. Is there any risk to taxpayers in this? How does this go bad, that it costs us more money somehow?
So Mayor, City Council, the only risk would be the market risk. So we give the seventy-four million dollars to COPERS, and then if they make a very, very bad investment, but what we'll do is, this really is, is not a lot of money in the context of the COPERS assets, and so we would work with the COPERS Pension Board to make sure that that money is invested very strategically. That's really the only downside. The other thing is, if we get to the market and bond prices happen to be high, we will not fulfill this transaction. So we'll be constantly making sure that it financially makes sense.
Yeah, Mayor, you're not going to do this if it doesn't make sense at that time. I dare say, I think it might have made more sense a month ago, but, but regardless, you know, it's, you know, these aren't exact things. Anytime you're making an investment, there is some risk, but the potential payoff is, is millions in savings, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The six point four million is, wasn't a permanently fixed number, the annual payment. That, that goes up and down based upon how well we're doing with pension form, et cetera. That's the number now.
Right.
That number, I guess theoretically, could go up over time, or it could go down over time, depending on, you know, the, how we're doing with regard to the number of new employees and employee contribution to the COPERS, et cetera. But in general, I think it's fair to say that even if it goes down, it probably wouldn't go down as much as the fixed amount that we likely can lock ourselves in at. Vice Mayor, you had a question? Vice Mayor, you have a question? Other comments or questions by Councilman DeCiccio, please.
If COPERS made a bad investment, you still owe it. So, I mean, under that logic, though, Denise, isn't it just, I mean, if COPERS ended up making a bad investment and it cost the fund more monies, you'd still have to pay it. Someone would have to pay that, correct?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that's correct.
So the risk level is virtually nonexistent at that point, if you take that element out of the equation. So, I mean, really what you're looking at here, to Councilman Waring's, you know, comments, and thank you for saying that, Jim, the other is that the fact is you're just basically refinancing a long, a debt that's normally at 7.4% down to, and I think you used 5% on this, is that correct?
Yes, I assumed 5% for the wastewater raise.
And so the market today is, what, 3.5%? What is that today, approximately?
I think we might be able to get it around 3%, but we'll have to see when we get there. By the time we get there in the spring, it could definitely be at 3.5.
So the savings could significantly be better, or it could be worse, depending on what's happening in the marketplace today. I mean, we saw large swings last week, but this week, a little more stabilization and a positive market. So, I mean, the 5% savings and the savings that you're seeing on the board could actually be more significant if you actually drop it down another point, point and a half, which I think is conservative and could happen in today's market. We don't know what it's gonna be like in the future. The other is, I'd like to make a friendly motion, if the maker wouldn't mind, or I can make a separate motion, I guess. I'd like to see where we would be if this was just a 10-year average. Right now, I think we talked about in my office, the 10-year average, I think, was 4.6 or 4.8% rather than 7.4, what that debt level would be. I'd like to just get an idea, so that the council at least gets some idea of what the ranges could be, and we could see the magnitude of the debt. It's up to, or if not, I can make a motion, it's up to you.
All right, we'll take it in the form of a substitute motion, but I'm not sure I we're understanding the difference.
The debate is, Mayor, of what is the right rate of return to use? I mean, if you look at the 10-year average, I can't remember, what was it, Denise, that you said in COPERS, 4.6 or 4, something like that? I can't remember, I didn't write those notes.
Right, so the 10-year average for COPERS is 4.4.
4.4. So just to take a look at both maybe COPERS and PSPRS and use a 10-year average, just to give the council more information. It's no more than that. It's providing more information so that at least we have something to look at. So I'd like to make, I guess, a separate motion to approve moving forward with the savings, but also to provide more information to the council with a 10-year average, or if you want to add more on to that, that's right. You know, if you want to add a 12-year or 15-year average, I can find with that, too. But at the end of the day, I'd like to give us at least a perspective of what the ranges of the debt could be, and that gives us at least the ability to start thinking ahead of how we can start solving some of these problems, too. So it just puts more transparency.
All right, good. I don't know if we need to make that part of the motion. We can get that information. I think that's a perfectly good information all to have. The motion, though, is to approve the staff recommendation. I don't know if that, if it's apples and oranges with, staff recommendation is to adopt this proposed policy for the wastewater fund to borrow the $74 million and pay off COPERS sooner with it. I'm not sure, you're asking for information that we could use for further decision-making down the line?
No, just I'm asking for more information to get an idea of what, if the rate of return was at 4.4% rather than 7.4%, what would that do to our unfunded liability? Just gives us more information to be able to look at and see this is a range of potential problems facing the city in the future.
All right, we'll certainly accept that information. I don't know if it's really apropos to the motion on hand, but I think we should all get that information. That's great.
Well, and I think the CAFER has a data in it right now that has different ranges, so one could get that information.
Well, do you have that? I mean, can I get, I don't have to add it part of the motion if staff says that they can get it for me. I just want to get the information.
That's fair.
So, Mayor, City Council, I just want to be clear. So that information is in the CAFER, but staff would be more than happy to provide that information to you. But I just want to be clear about this. The net pension liability is an actuarial determined number that's audited. And so the $74 million is a number that's in the CAFER, and so that is the number that we would have to pay down. We can't come up with a different number. We would have to use the number that's in the financial statements.
I'm agreeing with you on that. There's no disagreement. I'd just like to get an idea on PSPRS and COPERS in total, if you use the rate of returns that we talked about in my office. What would that debt look like? So is that something that, if I don't have to put in the motion, but I'd just like everybody to be able to have the same information that I get so that everyone sees it. But at the same time, is that something that, that you have available, that you can get? It's a yes or no, I guess? Or do I have to add it in the motion?
Mayor, City Council, we can provide that information.
Okay, great.
All right.
Councilman Stark, you have a question?
No, I just want to say I like to have that information as well, so.
We would give that to the entire council.
That's great. All right, there's a motion, there's a second. Any other comments or questions by members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes, so that motion passes unanimously, and noting that we'll be, all be getting additional information. Next item on the agenda is 2018 Legislative Update. And obviously, we're in the middle of the session, so things are moving very, very quickly. And Councilman Valenzuela sent me a memo and, to see if we can get a specific action on a particular bill that, I'm not sure the status of it currently, but, but asked that we would try to get behind. And so that's one of the action items here today, is to see if we can get behind that bill. Ms. Peters.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Karen Peters, Deputy City Manager, and today with us are Frank McKeon, Government Relations Director, along with John Wayne Gonzalez and Clark Prinsell from the Government Relations Office. They're here to present a legislative update, and I'll turn it over to Frank for that purpose.
Mayor and council members, 1,275 bills, approximately 1,279 bills have been introduced so far in the session. This is the busiest week of the session because bills have to be heard in the House of Origin in order for them to move forward. So every day this week, they're running from basically eight until late to hear everything that's gonna be heard for the first time. So this report is actually a relatively short report. Next week's report will be reflective of a much busier schedule, or the CCR going in next week, and then for the policy meeting next, it will be a real lengthy report. So we'll just dive right into what's going at the state, and we do want to remind you, action has been taken on legislation based upon the four pillars. And John Wayne Gonzalez, our Manager of State Relations, will run through the four pillars and go through the legislation.
Thank you, and as a reminder, these pillars were adopted in December. We have opposed any unfunded mandates, preserve local control, protect our revenues, and then, of course, protect our water resources. And with that, similar to the previous presentation in your packet, you have received information on bills. They're lettered A through D, and willing to take any questions you may have on any of those bills.
All right, any questions by members of the council on A through D, which our staff has suggested fits neatly within one of our pillars, so they have pretty clear direction from us, but any particular concerns about those bills? A lot of bad bills in that list, yeah. All right.
And with that...
We'll continue to oppose them, and according to the council...
Thank you.
Silence, that's good. All right.
Also in your packet, there are bills that we believe are supporting. One of the pillars, they cover the pillars that we could support, and they are bills E through F. And so are there any questions on letters E through F?
Any questions on bills that staff recommends support of? Councilman Williams, please.
John Wayne sent me notice of an animal cruelty bill. Does this fit in one of your pillars?
Mayor and Councilwoman, Senate Bill 1295 is a John Kavanaugh bill, which increases penalties for abusing animals. Since that's a criminal law, and we do have ordinances, it does not necessarily fit under one of our pillars.
Mayor may...
You want to add it?
I want to add it.
All right. All right. So you're adding, you're recommending that we support...
Yes.
That bill, what's the number again?
Senate Bill 1295.
1295, which generally increases penalties for animal cruelty, and it has the Councilwoman Williams stamp of approval. All right, good. All right, so that's on the list as well. Do we need a specific vote on that one, since it doesn't fit neatly in a pillar?
Mayor, if you don't mind, please.
All right, and we're down to the minimum number of votes necessary. Councilman Noakowski, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we have six. Okay, good. So the motion, Councilman Williams, your motion?
That we support 1295.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. So we are now supporting that bill, and let's get to work. All right, keep going.
All right, and Mayor and council members, there was one bill that was, a request was made to have it on, for the council to decide on it, and that is House Bill 2586. That is a measure that amends current state law to add sexual orientation and gender identity to the current statutes that prohibit discrimination in employment, housing, and places of public accommodation.
All right, and if this law passes, it'll allow the state to catch up to the city of Phoenix. Councilman Valenzuela, you asked for the action on this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an important bill. This is the first time a bill like this has been proposed at the legislature. It is, it is sponsored by bipartisan members or members on both sides of the aisle there. This is a bill that, if passed, it would update the nondiscrimination ordinance, and the mayor just mentioned something about catching up to the city of Phoenix. In 2013, I was, I was fortunate to be on this council when we updated our nondiscrimination ordinances, and, and that was incredibly important. In fact, that's something I think that, I really believe that that particular vote is one of the most important votes that I could ever cast, or anyone could ever cast, because at the end of the day, nothing is more important than fairness, nothing is more fundamental than fairness. And so this, this would be a big step in the, for the state of Arizona to move, to move our state forward, to focus on this particular bill. So I'm glad we're talking about it now. I would, I want to make a motion to put this on our legislative agenda as bills to strongly support.
With a motion in, in favor of supporting HB 2586, there is a second. Councilman Gallego, please.
Thank you. This is a great bill, but two of my colleagues said it would allow them, the state, to catch up with the city of Phoenix. I think our city nondiscrimination ordinance goes farther on protections of, for people with disabilities than this particular bill does, so perhaps we could encourage them to follow our lead on all matters of discrimination. Although unfortunately, I read an Arizona Republic article saying that this bill was unlikely to get a hearing. Do you have any good news for us?
Mayor and council members, while the bill is currently not scheduled for a committee hearing, there is talk that, and it's talk, that they might extend because of the extended deadline from Friday to next week. So there's a potential for the bill to be heard on that committee. And also, there is always the potential for the language to be added to another bill as via an amendment and/or a strike everything amendment.
It was disappointing to see the chairman disagreed with the bill and wasn't gonna schedule it for a hearing, but hopefully he will see the light, perhaps with the cities.
That certainly is the hope. With the city's strong support and with other cities also supporting Scottsdale and Mesa, with, with strong support from community partners, this is something that will be heard and, and passed. That's what we're hoping on, hoping for.
All right, thanks so much. There's a motion in favor, there is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any other actions you need from this, this council?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.